Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting the Germantown Board of Education to order at 7:03, and I ask that you join me in standing if you're able to say the pledge allegiance and for a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Official meeting notification. Mr. Stausland.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GSDWI.org website, as well as cable TV access channel 96.
Thank you. Rule call.
Satterberg.
Here.
Medved.
Here.
Loth.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Myself. I'm here. Reiman.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Do we have discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. I don't have the green sheet in front of me. Did anybody sign up tonight? Come on forward, please. Good evening and welcome. And please state your name.
Thank you. Scott Heffley. I've appeared before you before. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Brittany and her staff for all the work they did. I got the information packet. I was out of town on Friday and busy the weekend, so I didn't dig into it, but it's a lot of helpful information. The variance analysis, I'm telling you, for people that don't know budgeting, that's what they're going to look at, and that's what, it'll help them understand what it is that we're trying to do, which I think we have a congen plan going forward. And I know it's a three-year plan. I get that, but I did see the state revenue. The state aid numbers changed. I mean, you don't know that until it happens. I'm still concerned about the COVID going forward because I think state aid's going to drop in the next budget. Now, we don't know that, but they're going to have less money. There's a bunch of businesses that are in trouble, so. We really have to, not we, everybody has to get after this budget. And that's not going to be easy. I get that. I think we're looking at a lot of things. I didn't expect to have all the answers in a couple of months. I know it's going to take time, but what I'm looking at is with the new budget, you got around 7% fund balance, 6.95. To get to 12, that's 5% roughly. So 5% to really put the budget where stake guidelines are, if that's, for lack of a better word. So what we can't do, I don't think, is make up that 5% in three years, because your numbers are going to keep going up every year. You're going to have, you know, you might get better enrollment. If the state aid numbers drop by 40%, that's going to screw up the budget. So I don't know how, but I think we got to get after that 5% to get back to the 12% level sooner rather than later. I don't know exactly how to do that. I'm sure Brittany and her staff does, but a tremendous amount of work was done. I know. I appreciate it. I like seeing what, it's just, it's unbelievable. It was really well done. The only last thing I'd say is I'm still concerned about operational costs. We still have all these buildings beautiful. It's going to cost more people to keep them going. Now, now they're all new. We don't have a lot of operational costs, you know, from the standpoint of maintenance costs. Those are going to come in there, you know, whether we like it or not. Even stuff that's three or four years old, like a car will break down. So a building could break down too. So how are we addressing that? And that's really part of the budget, too. And again, I know Brittany's working hard looking for revenues, and I know we have some. Cuts are still, my opinion maybe, we have to cut somewhere. And, you know, I don't know where you cut it, but you got to cut it somewhere. And I know a lot of times people say, well, we can't cut, you know, salaries, you know, staff, because we don't have control over that. Well, you have a control over how much staff you have. Every school district does. So I just think we have to look at that going forward, but I really appreciate what was done to this point. I really thank you.
Great. And I want to thank you, too, for your engagement, also for our conversation on Friday evening. The board, we are stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we are a fiscally conservative board. And, you know, it's a blessing here that Brittany is here with us. And I think as a group and a team, we'll get it done, one step at a time. So. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the October 12, 2020 Board of Education, October 12, 2020, closed session minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 12, 2020, board meetings and closed session.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item five, reports and information items. Final referendum report. Mr. Stausland.
Yes, then I'll have Brittany share this. And Rhonda, if you could bring up the display for this. Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to let you know that I have Don Erickson. He is the supervisor, can you still hear me? The supervisor of Buildings and Grounds here with me as well. Due to the fact that I was not with the district through the construction processes, so I did lean on my staff a lot to be able to put this document together. I can go through the document as it comes to the financial aspects of it, if you'd like me to go in depth of that. This is a document that the board asked me to put together, so the community is aware of the projects that we have done to our buildings and grounds over, since 2016. This document will be put on our district website, and it will stay there for the purpose of referencing what we have accomplished. If you want an in-depth about the process that was, or the items and the years of, you know, we have a story at the beginning of the document, but Don Erickson can speak to that portion. And I'm assuming the majority of the board was here during that process. This is just taking everybody's information and putting it in one document. If you want, I can go through the financial aspect of it, or Don can speak to the details. Do you have a preference of what direction we go?
I leave it up to you.
Okay. Mike, do you?
I think maybe, maybe just go through this first page with a little bit of detail and how it relates to the rest of the pages in this report.
Sure. Okay, so the front page is a cover sheet, which is, as Mike stated, the detail is within the rest of the report. We do have the report broken down by building or by site or school. So the cover sheet is, again, a summary of the rest of the pages. So we went out for referendum, and a referendum was approved for the $84 million. That's the top number. As you know, we invest the $84 million, and you earn interest on that over the period of time it is invested. So that's the $1.4 million. So we had, through the construction process, we had an estimated budget of $85.5 million, if I'm rounding up. We did have other projects that we needed to do or to make our, I guess, the construction project complete. So we did use fund balance or the general fund fund balance of $2.5 million to complete some items. And those were, Don, correct me if I'm wrong really quickly, we used fund balance for the purchase of some properties, and so we were able to expand the MacArthur parking lots. We used fund balance for the equipment upgrades for our tech ed department at the high school. And there might have been, those are the only two items that we used out of fund balance. Small amount, but I wanted to be able to put it in here for reconciliation. The food service department did spend $75,000 on items in the cafeterias out of their budget. Capital expansion or the Fund 41, that's the capital projects fund, very small amount, but again, for reconciliation purposes, $4,500 came out of that account. Additional borrowings, we did borrow some funds over, it's over a 20-year period that we'll have to pay it back. But the Amy Bell addition is on there, and then also Rockfield Elementary had some construction done to it. That totals the $8 million. And then there was, as I stated before, community donations of about $118,000. So all the projects added together in all the different sources was about $96 million of improvements we did to our buildings.
And Brittany, of the $84 million, we could do a deep dive on that and provide additional clarity in terms of what the actual construction costs were, the architect fees, and also the costs associated with FFNA, which is the equipment.
Correct.
Furniture fixtures and equipment, so. But specific to architecture fees, that was around, Brett, maybe about five and a half million?
Correct. It was five, five and a half million.
Right. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we did do throughout the construction projects, updates on the budget and the expenditures throughout the projects. I know that there was, at one point in time, there was a committee regarding the construction project, and then it moved to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, in which reports were given out throughout the process. And then this was also included in our audits that we have every year. Our auditors that school districts have to get audited, their financials, every single year, and they have to audit all funds. And so all these funds, I guess you can call, or dollars, were included in those audits each year.
Yeah, I want to thank you for adding that governance piece, because it's very critical. So thank you.
Any further questions on this report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item six, insurance committee, discussion and action regarding employee health insurance and contribution rates for 2021. Mr. Byrne.
I think we'll have Mr. Noack introduce the topic, and then committee will have a motion brought forward, and then some additional discussion and motion.
Okay. Or Sarah.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, sorry, Sarah. I apologize. Are you okay with that, Sarah?
Yes. Mr. Noack can proceed.
Sure, thank you. The board met last Monday, and at the meeting, there was significant discussion around proposals. As a outcome of the meeting, there was a commitment to move forward with WEA and their proposal. From that, there was a discussion about coming back tonight to solidify the rates. I've included with background tonight a rate sheet for the 2021 plan year, which will begin January 1. The overview of rates for 2021 include the following. On the HSA plan, again, we'll have two options for employees. On the HSA plan, there will be a 0% increase for single and family with the same 5% penalty, if you will, for not meeting wellness expectations. And then on the other plan, which is the PPO plan, there'll be an 8.6% increase on the single and family plans. Now, with that increase in both those scenarios, I'm talking about the percentage of employee contribution. So 0% on the HSA, 8.6 on the PPO. Reason for the 8.6 is that the committee wanted to equalize the amount that, of district contributions to both plans, and doing all of that in one year would be a significant amount. So there was sort of an intermediary step of the 8.6% increase. Again, on the PPO as well, the penalty for not meeting wellness requirements is a 5% increase in employee contribution cost. The rate sheet that's attached kind of gives these, as we've done in years past, gives an overview of exactly the costs that I'm talking about.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Noack. As he indicated, we met last Monday, and we had asked three of the providers, WEA, Anthem, and WCA, to come back with a best and final, per se, because there were some discrepancies between the plans. And we landed on WEA for several reasons, including we were able to achieve a further savings with the premium quoted, which the district is realizing directly, we aren't passing that savings on to the employees, so helping to make up some of the budget gap. We're also having a savings by increasing the premium paid by the PPO group. As Mike said, this is going to be a two-year step in to make it an equal contribution that the district makes between the HSA and the PPO. Also, in consideration, WEA, they have a rate cap for the second year, which was more competitive than the other carriers. And given that we've had experience with Anthem-type carriers and knowing what their mode of operation is, we felt more comfortable with the WEA's second-year cap. And then, as well as, we will end up having the budgetary savings for what Brittany had budgeted for a premium increase as compared to what we are achieving in savings. So the committee is coming forward with a positive recommendation to renew with the WEA for the 2021 plan year, and then we'll make a separate motion regarding the increase for the PPO.
Thank you. That's coming to board. The positive recommendation doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
So now I'd like to make a motion that we increase the PPO employee contribution by 8.6% for the 2021 plan year.
That's not coming to the board with a positive recommendation, so we need a second.
I will second that.
Thank you. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And so that really was the culmination of our discussion from last Monday. There's no other items to discuss.
Thank you. Comments, questions for Mrs. Larson?
I guess, Mr. Noack, do you need a motion as far as rates for the other plans?
Well, I think maybe we do. I understand why we just acted on the 8.6, because that's the change. But maybe a motion to solidify the rates as presented, and the 8.6 is part of that. Does that make sense?
Was that part of the WEA insurance?
Yes.
For healthcare?
Yeah.
Not the dental and vision, and those were a 0% change, and I believe we discussed those
We did that, yeah.
In the last meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if we need another motion, because we just approved the motion.
Well, we approved
The 8.6.
WEA, and we approved the 8.6.
So we're looking for a motion to approve.
Well, we could do a friendly amendment
Yeah.
To that 8.6, to say, and all other rates as presented.
Yeah.
There we go.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Great. Do we have to take a vote on that?
I think we do.
Okay. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Anything else, Mrs. Larson?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item seven, policy committee. Mr. Byrne.
Yes, Policy Committee met last week and had another marathon session. Coming forward are 26 new policies, 63 updated policies, and then one policy deletion. So out of committee, committee brings forward to the board with a positive recommendation to approve all policies as presented.
Thank you. Coming to board with a positive recommendation does not require a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
There is nothing else to bring forward, committee, at this time, other than to say that we are caught up on all of our policy recommendations from NEOLAS. So it'll be, hopefully, first quarter of next year before we have another big block of policies like this to bring to you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item eight, personnel committee. Mrs. Larson.
The Personnel Committee met this evening, and you'll find that as we go through these items, many of them are driven by trying to achieve a cost savings within our budget. Item A deals with a Health Club membership subsidy that we had offered previously. And we are coming forward tonight with a positive recommendation to have the subsidy ended for, at the end of calendar year 2020. And as an aside, we will continue to try and promote discounts on Health Club memberships once the subsidy has ended.
Great. That's coming to board. The positive recommendation does not require a second. Do we have discussion? I will say that we should encourage staff to use our beautiful facilities here at the high school, our own fitness center, which is open to the public and open to our staff, free of charge. So further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Okay, so that, just as an aside, is a savings of about $9,300 a year. The next item that we talked about was the cash-in-lieu benefit for part-time teachers regarding health insurance. And somehow, when cash-in-lieu was reviewed a year or so ago, this was not caught. And so currently, those part-time staff would be getting a cash-in-lieu amount equal to a full-time employee. And so we are bringing forward with a positive recommendation to prorate the cash-in-lieu of health insurance benefit for part-time employees, reflecting a proration equivalent to their FTE standing, effective 1-1 of 2021.
Thank you. That's coming to board. The positive recommendation does not require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And the savings on that is about $21,500. We are now on to winter co-curricular coaching contracts. The list of contracts were presented. Everything seemed pretty straightforward. We're bringing forward a positive recommendation to approve the winter co-curricular contracts for GHS and KMS, with the contracts including the language for this school year, which reads, "For the 2021 school year, compensation for coaching and advising contracts will utilize a prorated approach based on the number of allowable practices and competitions completed."
Thank you. That, too, is coming to board. The positive recommendation doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
This next item is surrounding a second shift differential for custodians. And in looking at what the practices are, the administration has compared with other districts, and it appears that the shift differential has gone to the wayside as a practice. And really, there are not any substantial differences between duties between the first time, first shift staff and second shift staff. And so we are bringing forward with a positive recommendation to eliminate the shift differential beginning January 1 of 2021, and this will be amounting to about a $10,000 annual savings.
Thank you. That, too, is coming to board. The positive recommendation does not require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Our final item of discussion was restructuring the Building and Grounds Department, looking for ways to gain efficiency. Some of the items included overlapping the start and end times to provide better communication from one shift to the other, combining two part-time positions into one full-time position, bringing the uniform allowance into a scenario where the district will order the shirts directly, as opposed to providing an annual stipend to the staff. As well as then, currently, there are two categories of employee, lead custodian and head custodian, and essentially, they do the identical duty. There is a difference in pay. And so we will be eliminating the position of head custodian, and those folks will be under the lead custodian category. And those changes would go into effect January 1 of 2021. So we are coming forward with a positive recommendation to restructure the Building and Grounds Department as presented. And as a side note, as they go through this, there will be some additional changes to the department that will be coming forward after further review, such as currently, there are 11 different positions within that department. And as they review the job descriptions, they're hoping to whittle it down to six, and just evaluating a whole variety of other items.
Great, thank you. That coming to board with a positive recommendation does not require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And that concluded what we spoke about tonight.
Thank you. Comments, questions for Mrs. Larson? Okay, thank you, Sarah. Moving on to item nine, finance committee, discussion and action to approve 2020, 2021 budget and tax levy. Michael.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee meeting did meet earlier this evening, and we bring a motion forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the 2020, 2021 final budget and tax levy as presented, and adjust the appropriate accounts identified as the adoption format, which was presented at the annual meeting for final submission to the Department of Public Instruction as required, and certify the tax levies to each of the municipalities within the Germantown School District.
Thank you. That, too, is coming to board. The positive recommendation doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? Michael.
Yes, she put an awful lot of work into it. We covered this in great detail in the Finance Committee, but I'd like to have Brittany just cover the highlights at a glance. And also, if you could, in that last bullet point, I forgot to ask for the definition of WUFAR, the acronym.
The Wolfher Accounting. It's the Wisconsin Uniform Accounting Requirements. I think I have one letter that's missing under there, but those are the accounting standards that we have to follow. And it tells us where we fund, where we put certain expenditures, and it is audited by the Department of Public Instruction every year to make sure that we are following those guidelines. So yes, the Wolfher Accounting System.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay. Briefly, as Mike stated, I did go into more detail. The budget did come to the board at the annual meeting, which was approved at the end of September. There are many things that we don't know at the end of September, so we are coming back today for final approval. If there's any changes to the budget after today, it does have to come to full board for approval. So if we do make changes, I will be coming back to ask the board for those changes. But the levy or the tax certification to the municipalities is final as of today. It has to be sent out to the municipalities within the next week, so that's why it has to be done prior to October 31. Brief overview, since the annual meeting, the revenue budget did increase approximately $53,000, but the expenditure side did increase approximately $350,000. The majority of that is due to our open enrollment out, which we don't know those numbers until mid-October. The revenue limit at the annual meeting was $37,330, $37,330,209. It is now, for final approval, $37,662,126, which is an increase of $331,917. The way you got to that number is the decrease in state aid, which is approximately $264,000, and that's the decrease in state aid, which, again, turns over to the property taxpayers. And then an increase in the voucher, the voucher program, which is about $68,000. So those two added together totally are 331 change in the revenue limit since the annual meeting. So the budget as of today, revenue in the general fund is $47,426,79, and then the total expenditure budget as of today is $48,821,479.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Brittany. I don't know if it was covered in the committee meeting or not. Do we have the data on the open enrollment out as to what those students opted to do and how that compared from last year?
We are able to pull the information out of OPAL, which is a portal on the DPI website, to state where the students are open enrolling out or into. Yes, we can pull that data for the board.
Okay.
I don't have it with me. I don't have it with me today.
Further comments for Brittany? Before we take a vote, I just want to applaud you and your team, Brittany. I know when we met last week, you had a lot of wonderful ideas. And I think it's going to be great hearing those ideas once again. You're new to the district and you're seeing a lot of new things. And I just, again, I want to applaud you for all you do and your team's efforts, so.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, we also approved October's vouchers. And we also discussed the community report for construction projects summary. And that's mostly to do with the referendum. We just covered that in the full board.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments for Michael? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 10, new business. Discussion and possible action regarding return to school plan. Mr. Stossel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sotterberg. On the screen eventually is just some data. And just going back to, again, our intention is to have the most days of school, with the most days of kids in school. And we've been in a holding pattern and been able to manage kids in school, out of school, hybrid, virtual. And I know our goal is to get five days in, but we are managing the hybrid model as we speak. The next slide is the ZIP codes that come into our school district. And as you can see, I left in gray below there, kind of how we've been trending the last several weeks. And you can see it's, for most cases, is the highest we've been. In some cases, two and a half times more. Next slide is the comparison of area districts around us. And we've always, at least the last three times we've looked at this, we've been in the middle. The difference is, the middle used to be the transition point between high and very high. And you can see all but one district of the 10 are in the very high. Next slide, please. One thing that Tammy and our tech folks have been working on is a dashboard of information. And Rhonda, if you click on the link, thank you, and just scroll down a little bit, it'll take you to the live dashboard. And that will get updated almost every day. We're hoping it's, we've got that part figured out. But you can look at each school. And at the bottom, you can also look at staff numbers. So, this is sitting on our website. Next slide, please. Another resource that was put together by Tammy is this COVID-19 resource. And all these, everything that's underlined are links, external links to other places for more information. So, it's kind of a one-stop shop for families. And I had to break it into two parts. But the first part is, you know, information for staff, that's information for students. And if you go to the next slide, you can see there's a somewhat of a flow chart of testing protocols around if you're symptomatic, if you've had close contact. And also, the daily screening chart, which we've, that's been around for a while since August. But it's all in one spot. And next slide, please. And then, you know, updates from each of the different levels. And I'm going to have, Katie's going to talk a little bit about elementary. And she's kind of representing all four elementaries.
I have, what's it on? I have an update from each of the principals that they sent to me. So, I'll just go through those. Rockfield is nearly fully staffed at this point. And they've really pulled together as a staff to support some of the special education aid vacancies that they've had. They're very thankful for their food service and recess support staff that have extended their hours to accommodate the needs of the school. They also had, a highlight that the PTA put together some fall festivities for families to participate from at home. And on Facebook this year, since they typically do their Rocktober Fest and are not able to do that in person. County Line has been going through a rough patch with COVID quarantines. Several days, they've had 10 or 11 staff out with only two subs in the building. So, scrambling to fill responsibilities has taken a toll on the staff. And when those things occur, it kind of has a domino effect. But they've risen to the occasion and have helped each other out. And then, MacArthur, they have some PTA fun activities for the students and staff. They have some theme days going on. And to close out the week, the PTA is hosting a drive-through trick-or-treat on Friday, which will be very similar to how they did their farewell at the end of the school year. So, it'll be safe. The candy will be safely distributed to the students. So, thanks to the PTA at MacArthur. And as far as Amy Bell, we debriefed after our conferences on Friday. And we did all of them virtually. And I had a lot of positive feedback from the staff. They felt like they went really well. Felt like that was a great option to communicate with families. And we took some good notes on some tech things that we could remember for next time if we need to do them completely virtual again. We also had a really successful in-service, I would say, on Friday, spending that time. We also have had, we had very nice, probably seven weeks without any cases of COVID. We now have had a few cases in the building. But we've had some minimal quarantine from that, which I think we handled very well. So, we are getting by. We also have had some instances of being short-staffed as far as getting substitute teachers. But overall, we've been able to fill anything that we need to on a day-to-day basis. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
I think a big thank you to all of our staff in Germantown, honestly. We all know that this is unbelievable for everybody. And we know that you all are trying to do your best. And just thank you for keep on chugging along.
Mike, I got a question specific to what Katie mentioned on subs. Are we seeing any improvement in that category?
No. I'm not Mike, but I'm, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, not necessarily. It's a day-to-day struggle. It's a challenge. It's not unique to Germantown. It's something everybody's facing. You know, it's literally, you know, every morning, we go through this routine of kind of, especially with the middle and high relative to, you know, bigger numbers, of making sure we have coverage. We're growing into a process where if people are out with quarantines or with COVID, finding ways, if possible, for them to teach in virtually. Now granted, we still need subs, but we don't need, or we need someone in the classroom. We don't need someone with the level of expertise to deliver what that teacher could though in that scenario. So, we're getting better that way. But it's still a challenge, definitely.
And it's not something, if we flex up in terms of the daily rate, that?
No, it's, you know, we've heard some of that relative to other areas of the state that are doing those kinds of things. That may be the case if we're looking to have someone for a longer extended period of time. Something close to a long-term sub, but maybe not 45 days. So, maybe it's, you know, of the, I don't know, month-long variety or something like that. We may benefit there. But on a day-to-day basis, it, in some regards, it is what it is.
I know this is a rhetorical question, but I would be most curious in terms of what the root cause is from the providers on why they can't find staff. Because we've been in this school year for how many weeks now? You don't have to answer that. That's fine. And you would think that those from the outside looking in would see that school districts, like the Germantown School District, is managing COVID very well in our K through 5, as well as our middle school and high school.
Yeah, the only thing I would say to that is, and I think we've, I think we're past this point. But in really that first month in particular, we were, the sub pool in general across the area, metropolitan area, there was a reluctance to sub because of that. But that's, you know, we've sort of gone beyond that. But now, what we have too is more districts coming back on. So, some of those districts that were virtual are now added. And as we move forward, hopefully, as everyone comes back on, that could really put a tax on the system, for what it's worth.
Great, thank you. Brett?
Yep, middle school has comments just around the routines. Have, they've settled into their routines. And they had their period of several people out, kids out. They, that's been a little better. One of the comments that I love from a staff member said, "It's worth the effort for the students, but no time to do it all." But I think they're, the hard work that they're putting in, they truly are seeing the benefits for the kids. And they don't mind doing it. It's trying to have time to do it all. Like Ms. Cole said about parent conferences virtually, they had a lot of positive comments from the middle school on the virtual conferences. And, you know, one of the resonating comments was, you know, "I didn't have to get in the car, drive to the school, sit, wait for a conference, have a conference for 15 minutes, then drive home." Or I could, the parent could just sit in their home and do the conference, so. And then, I have Mr. Farron here to talk about the high school. And as he's coming down to talk, a couple stats from the high school. So, they've had those, their catch-all days, which have been, I would say wildly successful. They, of the 200, on October 1st, 241 students came in person. Of those, 114 were virtually only students. And another 930 kids connected virtually. Then on October 16th, their last catch-all day, they had 86 of the virtual-only students attend and 834 connected virtually. And those numbers are down a little bit from the October 1st date. But they had a dozen-plus teachers out. And Joel can talk about the difficulties around that.
Is that it? What would you like to know? The last two weeks, I'm not going to, you guys, those of you that know me, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Last two weeks have been more than challenging. They've been brutal. Starting, so if you go two weeks ago, Monday, this is how the process sort of works. First, I'll start with the positive. And I'm extremely pleased with how our staff are trying to manage and how they're trying to help each other out during the absences. So, if you go back to the weekend, two weeks ago, we started getting inundated where for the first time, our staff was really getting hit with it. And not just getting hit with positive tests, but there were ones that were going to go on quarantine. You know, I need to thank Mike and Tammy. You know, it's, this is a 24/7 thing. I'll just explain kind of how it goes. I wake up at 5:15. I check my email. I start the process. This person is not feeling well. They do the survey. I ask Tammy to make the call medically as to what they need to do. That triggers then the next steps based on her medical advice. Then triggers me and my assistant Julie Cullen to figure out how we're going to get coverage for these people. Initially, we'll put them in for one day. But we now have someone that's going to be out for 24. We have multiple people that went out for 14. I'm sure Brett and Mike are getting sick of me giving them updates. But there were certain days, we were getting towards, the highest was probably 18% of our staff that were out. And that wasn't going to be just for that day. So, luckily, you know, some went and got tested and were cleared based on the testing. And so, that was about, you know, that was last week. So, last week, you know, I even talked to Mike and to Brett, like, luckily, we have a catch-all day on that Friday. And then, the following week, we have three days of instruction within service. And we, I mean, we legitimately limped into that. And I came in, my assistant sitting there facing, trying to fill 16 positions. You can't. There's not enough subs. So, what we do, if you don't understand this, is, so we have a seven-period day with a resource period. Teachers' contracts to teach five with a duty, so usually like a study hall, and a resource period. We have multiple teachers that do overloads. That pulls them out of the ability to cover other classes during that. We hit the max. We had our dean of students. Carl Anderson went in. He taught three of the English classes. If a teacher is healthy enough, they're just on quarantine, we go through the process. Are you healthy enough to teach from home for this limited period of time? Yes, that's where we can put in a support staff member or an aide temporarily. There are certain cases, if they're legitimately sick, like what we have now, where they're not going to be able to do that. And again, the sub pool, just to branch off of Mike, you know, the question for you, Bob, you know, that you asked. A lot of subs in the past were teachers who came out of college and could not attain employment. Well, if you remember when we were here in August, we were having trouble finding people to teach. So, we finally got people to teach. Just a parallel example, you know, we've been trying to get a math teacher. These math teachers took on all these overloads because we couldn't find one. So, we reposted for second semester, hoping maybe a college grad. I have one applicant right now. So, if you don't have the teaching pool, you're not going to have the sub pool. Add on to it, the retirees who are in their 60s and 70s who don't want to go into buildings. They just don't. So, with that, the staffing piece, you know, Brett just said, "Let's try to get into that." You know, try to get to that in-service time. And thank, you know, thank God we had those two days. And so, the process started over again today. Got up, have another one on our way to work. And got a call from a relative saying, "I just tested positive. Turned around, went home." We have a husband and wife who teach in different buildings. They, they're out. So, we're kind of back in the same position. So, it's extremely challenging. We sift through the staff piece. Other staff have, you know, really stepped up. But it's October. And these people are hurting already. They really are. So, I've made it clear to those that have asked, I want to thank Mrs. Reinemann. She stopped by the other day. Thank you for listening. I brought my assistant Julie Cullen. I just said, "She wants to hear it. Let her know how it's going." And it hasn't gone well, from that perspective, from the absence perspective. Those that are there did an awesome job. Within that, just one thing to add, we came up on a unique thing where when the staffing at the end of last week seemed to be getting better, then the issues transitioned to another thing that we hadn't really prepared for. And when we were sending multiple people out, Tammy has that fun job of calling along with her assistant. And today, we had multiple secretaries. They get called terrible names. They are, you know, the negativity that they have to endure when someone is sent home to be quarantined. I told Tammy, "I'm used to it. I'm an administrator." They're not. And they're just doing their job. And so, one of the things that's happened recently is, especially the students who are involved in co-curriculars, near the end of their seasons, they get put on quarantine. It's extremely unfortunate. I feel terrible for them. But we had this trend where there were some parents and kids going after our teachers, saying, "Why did you say I was in close contact? Now I can't participate. This is your fault." This should not happen. And we managed that. Administration stepped in. I get it. People are very emotional. But our staff has a deal with that, too. And so, you know, that was something that kind of led into the in-service time, which couldn't have come at a better time. And now, we're faced again, you know, starting this morning again, with multiple people out. I don't even know, I sent the email out. I think it was six that tested positive. I don't even know how many you sent home today. Just the six?
Well, no, we sent six really home because of the pandemic. But most of them are being quarantined.
Perfect.
Due to a senior someone who already tested positive. So, we actually only can send four to getting home today.
Okay, okay. So, it finally hit us. We had a period of time where some of these things happened over the weekend. And we were really fortunate that we didn't have to send these people home. But this is similar, you know, I'm friends with the principal at Brookfield East. They went, they had to go fully virtual. They extended it. Whitefish Bay did it last night. I don't want to go backwards. Don't get me wrong. I do not want to go backwards. I don't want to go back to what we had to deal with in March. But I think most of you know I'm going to be really honest about things. Last two weeks for our staff, and I'm talking about our teaching staff, our support staff, all the way up to administration, has been extremely challenging. And I'm hoping it approves. Every day, I wake up hopeful. And, you know, it's that process where Mike and I are talking sometimes the latest 10 o'clock at night, like, what are we going to do? How are we going to get this covered? Who are we going to put in there? And so, the square peg in the circular hole, or, you know, pulling a rabbit out of the hat, it's just getting harder and harder every day. So, I have to be open and honest. I hope you appreciate that. And I do appreciate the job that you guys are doing, because I know you're hearing it, too. I think it was Mrs. Larson that said back in August, "Lose, lose." She couldn't have been more right. Couldn't have been more right. Couldn't have been more right. So, uh, our, we're, we're doing our best, we really are doing our best. Any questions?
I'll just comment, um, I mean, I've been seeing all the emails that you've been sending and we're hearing a lot of, um, the issues and the opportunities. And I just wanna congratulate you and your staff, um, and the entire district staff for doing, going above and beyond. No one ever expected this to happen. Uh, I will comment on the, um, the, um, moms and dads, um, and the hate out there. I know there's a district site here in the community that, uh, the acronym, or not the acronym, it's, uh, go something, I call that the Go Hate website, Facebook site. And there's a lot of hate, there's a lot of bullying, you see it from the same parents that apparently have nothing else to do except get in there and spew hate. Um, I could take that as an elected official, but it's not fair for you, uh, for your secretaries or anyone in the district to, to deal with that crap. And I'll call it crap, I apologize for saying that. It's uncalled for, it's not acceptable, this is Germantown. And it's, it shouldn't happen. So I apologize for that. And I've got my own, uh, school board, uh, my personal school board Facebook post, I'll say something about that tonight. 'Cause I'm very embarrassed for our community, I'm very ashamed that it's the handful of parents that continue to do this and attack and attack and attack. And it's not fair to you or anyone else in the district, so I apologize for that.
And I appreciate, as an administrator, I expect that. I, you know, I just, I'm trying to get the backs of our teachers who are doing the right thing, reporting correctly and getting emails saying, "Please change your mind, lie for me." And that, it's going on, I have all, I, it's all in an email folder, I have all this information and we're trying to help that. And, you know, they're just doing their job. And they're trying to do it in the best interest of kids. And in terms of the medical piece with what Tammy does, she has to follow that. And our staff are doing a diligent job in doing that, and now they're the ones getting attacked. Me, hey, you know what, I've done this seventeen years, I, I'm just, I'm used to it, it's gonna happen, comes with the job. But our teachers shouldn't have to put up with that.
No, I, I know, uh, and I just will add that there's a lot of stress going on in our community. Uh, stress at the staff level, stress at the moms and dad level, I get it. But in the end, we, we treat people, we wanna be treated like we expect to be treated and you shouldn't, that's not acceptable. There's ways of communicating, that's not the right way, so.
I would agree. Thank you.
Further comments for Mr. Farron?
Yeah, just one, maybe this is more for Tammy. Um, when a teacher's tested, how long does it take to get the results back? Or student?
It depends. So it depends where you go and it depends on what kind of test you get. So they have the rapid test that are out there now, and sometimes that can come back within a few hours, sometimes twenty-four hours. However, those rapid tests, there's a lot of false negatives that come out. So if you actually look at the chart that, um, Mr. Solsom put out there before, that was on the one-pager right there, it does say that if you do get a rapid and it does come back negative, you are supposed to get a PCR test within forty-eight hours of that negative rap, rapid test, so that's three days at least right there. And then depending if the specimen is sent to a private lab versus a state lab, will also depend on how long it takes. So sometimes it can actually take up to seven days before you get those test results.
In our quarantine period right now, is it fourteen days or ten?
So if you're, it depends. So in isolation, if you are developing symptoms, you are, uh, very sick, it's a ten-day isolation. If you are in quarantine because you are in close contact with someone that tested positive, it's fourteen days. However, if it's a household live in contact, so if a parent or say a student who had tested positive and they cannot isolate from that positive individual in the home, their fourteen-day quarantine does not start until that positive individual is released from their ten-day isolation. So that's a twenty-four-day quarantine period.
Okay, thank you. It's a nice review of the numbers.
Tammy, how are you doing and your staff?
Not good. Uh, I talk to my staff on a daily basis as much as I can. Um, County Line is not in a good place right now. I talk to my health aide there on a daily basis right now, uh, sometimes for an hour each night, just talking about the day, just let it out. And I try to do that for them. My health aide in the high school is not in a very good place, she's probably the second most who gets it more than I do, to be honest. Um, like I said, today was six positive cases, we're averaging about four to five on a daily basis at the high school right now. And what's, what's really hard is she's also a parent of students in the district. So what's happening is, is on after-school hours or on the weekends, these parents are texting her and calling her, and I don't wanna say that they're taking advantage, but it, but it's more, sometimes it's not 'cause they just want information, but then sometimes it's like, "Why was my kid identified? I don't understand this, why are they not six feet apart?" And her and I are trying to explain that. But now what's happening, our kids are starting to make the connection of who her children are and are trying to say, "Hey, can you tell your mom to let me come back to school 'cause I really wanna be in my athletic event tonight?" So when Mr. Farron was saying that, it, it has, I don't know where it came from, but all of a sudden last week, the students were really starting to come right at Mrs. Inga and I, and then they were going right to their teachers because it's, it's easy to figure out who's tested positive. We, you know, even though we don't tell anybody, we don't say names, it's pretty easy to figure it out. So then they figure that out, they go to those teachers and then they start, "Why was I identified? I'm six feet apart," all of these things, but I have to go by what that individual says. Whether you're a coach, whether you're a teacher, they're the ones in that classroom, they're the ones that know how the classroom flows, how it works, and we have to go through that. There's parents who have been, uh, emailing, so first we get the phone calls all day long, all of us health aides, we get the phone calls, and then the emails are after hours all day long and on the weekends. It's, it's never-ending, not just for me, but for them as well.
Can you let us know what we can do to, um, assist? Maybe not now, maybe work with Brett and, 'cause we wanna make sure that, uh, you're, you're guys are rock stars. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're doing all we can to support you.
Thank you.
Now, I got a technical question for you.
You betcha.
Pivoting, uh, there's a lot of pharmaceuticals in Phase Three of testing.
Yeah.
Pfizer announced this week that they're in production pending November approval from the FDA for a vaccine. Availability of that vaccine, uh, and the reliability of that vaccine is unknown at this time. Is it an opportunity for the district, I know we're doing PCR testing for COVID, to look at antigen testing and do that in-house? To have that onsite capability in-house, would that benefit you?
So the antigen testing is the rapid testing, so it's the same thing. So if we would get that negative test, they would have to go get that PCR within forty-eight hours. So that rapid is what the antigen test is.
Got it.
Um, there's, we had that conversation last month with the health department and there's a lot of hoops that we need to go through, there's a lot, you have to have certain kind of machine or something, I'm not really sure. Uh, I don't know of anyone within my group that's actually doing it. To be honest with you, Bob, I would not wanna be the first one.
Reason why I say, my, my company is, we're, we're researching that they have onsite capability, so.
Yep, and it, and it is out there, I, like I said, I don't know of anyone who's done it around here. The only, my only concern with that is too, is, is when you do the test, because if you do it too early, it's gonna come back negative and you think that it is a true negative when the next day or the next couple of days, they could test positive and we could be spreading it more. So that is just a little bit of a fear of mine at this point, but hey, if they say it works, I'd be willing to do it.
Yeah, 'cause no one has a crystal ball and, uh, we don't know where we're gonna be six months from now.
Right.
So. Okay. Questions for Tammy?
Thank you. Big air hug.
Yes.
You got this.
I love you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Brett?
Yep. Um, I've asked Todd to speak a little bit about, about special ed and, um, just to reinforce that, that our, we are addressing the needs of our special ed students, even though we're, we're down some staff in certain areas, so. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. Solsom. Truly, we did not rehearse this, but, uh, what you're going to hear is really the same theme being repeated. And I would echo what has already been shared with regard to, as I talk with staff, their biggest concern is the capacity to have subs and to, to be, to be staffed. Um, they're doing the absolute best they can with what they have and with who is available. Uh, some of our teachers are beginning each day trying to figure out how to work with the scheduling of existing staff, uh, because they know they're not going to be full-staffed and so they are, um, being creative with regard to how to meet needs of students. Uh, we have some positions for which, uh, we've had vacancies posted since summer and there have been zero applicants, uh, for months. We've reposted, trying to refresh those postings, uh, and we continue to have no applicants for those positions. Saturday morning, Mark Kabriziak, uh, just to try to make it a little more convenient for people who may be interested, uh, Mark Kabriziak made a link on the front of the district webpage for employment opportunities, so for anybody who is interested, it's a little easier to find, uh, and we certainly hope that there will be some people who are, who are interested. Staff are continuing to communicate with families as best they can, as, as, or communicate consistently when changes are made, uh, as they provide services as best they can. And they truly are going above and beyond to maintain the continuity of service for our students. But, um, the term flexibility is just a complete understatement and, um, that, that they're truly putting forth everything they have, and it's been an incredible challenge, but I give them incredible credit for all that they're doing to provide the continuity. So, uh, without being overly redundant, it's the same theme.
Great. Thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd?
Todd, do we know our aides that we're pulling in to help into the rooms where our teachers are virtual, those are not aides that are disrupting an IEP, correct? Like, so our aides, so we've got our virtual, our teachers teaching virtually in the classroom, right? And then we have a, we pull an aide in to assist the kids that are in the classroom, that aide is not set to help one of our special needs kids or somebody else is stepping in to help with that person's duty, correct?
They're, they're covering in every way possible and we have aides who are providing services virtually to students who are at home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if I answered your question or not.
I just wanna make sure that, that our students that have the aide for their IEP are not being disrupted.
No. No, we're, we're doing everything possible to meet all services possible unless staff have communicated with parents otherwise, um, to come up with alternatives, but.
Okay.
Um, yes, we're doing everything possible to meet the needs of students as written in their IEPs.
Thank you.
I think I understand your question. When I said we pulled aides to go to classrooms, we are not pulling from the pool of special ed program aides.
Okay.
Uh, we're talking about like hall monitors and things like that.
Okay.
So I, if, I didn't mean to confuse you, but we haven't access, we've talked about not accessing special ed for that exact reason.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments for Todd? And Todd, again, uh, I'll echo the same thing I've been saying, keep up the good work. So, appreciate that.
Our staff.
Okay. Um, next slide, please. Thanks, Todd. Um, this, just to give you an idea, um, this is the second quarter or the choice data from second quarter, um, or for second quarter, and the, the takeaway on this is that we have, um, approximately, if you go across the whole district, seventeen percent of our kids are choosing, uh, fully virtual, which is, um, different than first quarter. We had twenty percent of our kids, um, choosing virtual and that difference is we have approximately a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty more kids, um, that are choosing to be in person. Um, so that's, the numbers didn't change much and, and one thing we were, were semi-worried about was that the elementary, if we had too many variations in, in the, in the choice, that we would have to reconfigure our, our staffing there and we were able to, um, walk away with one minor, um, adjustment, so, um, that, that helped, that there wasn't, um, too much change. And then next slide, please. And, you know, what next? We continue as a, as the board, continue to review, um, each board meeting, how we're doing. We continue to look for ways to manage creatively, um, 'cause we, with the shortages that you've heard, um, it's, it's, it's non-stop in certain places and it seems like it goes for several weeks and then it, that cools off in that particular building and then moves to another building, so. And second semester, we're still exploring, um, how the, how the virtual option, um, can best be approached for elementary, middle and, and high school. Um, and, um, so we're looking at some, some different options for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brett. Questions, comments? Again, uh, you guys are rock stars, uh, you're, no one ever expected this to happen and it's kinda, we're taking it day by day, but, uh, I like the plan you have in place, it's flexible, we could pivot when we could pivot. Um, and I think everybody on staff is doing a wonderful job, um, very challenging right now. A lot of stresses are going, stressors are going on, not only within, uh, these four walls, but also outside. I get it. My ninety-three-year-old grand, or my ninety-three-year-old mom is in quarantine 'cause she had a dinner with one of her friends over the weekend who was COVID-positive. Uh, so there's a lot of things going on out there, but I would just ask that, um, mask up where appropriate, if you can, social distance, um, practice personal hygiene if you're sick, don't come into the workplace, don't come into the school, and do all you can to model that behavior in the community, because it's not gonna get any better if we don't use common sense. And unfortunately, I see that we're not using that outside in the community. And the domino effect, it's impacting us within these four walls. And we're all trying to do our, the best possible job here in the delivery of educational services, and, but we need everyone's help, uh, everyone's help in the community. So mask up, do your thing, and hopefully, uh, there'll be light at the end of the tunnel. So, again, again, thanks, Brett, a wonderful presentation and, uh, we look forward to another one at the next board meeting. So, comments, questions for Brett? Okay, we are moving on to item eleven, closed session. The Board of Education will entertain a motion to go to closed session, pursuant to sections nineteen eighty-five one F, nineteen eighty-five one G, and nineteen eighty-five one I, for discussion of personnel issues in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. The board may take action in closed session if necessary or appropriate or entertain a motion to reconvene in open session to take further action if necessary and appropriate and/or to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Entertain a motion.
We'll go into closed session as stated.
I'll second.
Discussion, no discussion, roll call, please.
Medved?
Yes.